I call to order the April 9, 2019 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present seven.
Would you all please rise while councilmember Herman leads us in the invocation and then the students will office with a pledge of allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you boys want to come up again, we have a certificate for you for your helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance. And you guys want to turn around and face that corner. And two of you look like twins. So I'm going to ask you your name, where you go to school, and your favorite subject. So we'll start with you.
My name is Kendrick Bukavatz. And where I go to school is Jacob Shapiro STEM Academy. And my favorite subject is math.
Great. Trina, we keep having all these students who like math. You've got people for the accounting department coming up. Kendrick, this is a certificate for you. Thank you. And I know who you are.
My name is Kalen Bukavatz. I go to school at the Shapiro STEM Academy. And my favorite subject is math, too.
Well, you guys are a duncall. Holy cow. Okay, and this is for you. Your name?
Dakota Ryats. I go to Jacob Shapiro Academy. And my favorite subject is PE and math.
Okay, well, thank you. And this is for you, too. Well, three math majors. Wow. You can stay or go home now and do homework.[153.16][153.16](APPLAUSE). Those are a crowd. Mr. Roth, you would like to introduce three staff members? Or Mr. Robbie?
I'm going to have Mr. Robbie do it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Not so much of an introduction of new staff, but I wanted to reintroduce a couple of familiar faces in some new roles within the Department of Public Works. As was talked about a little bit in the newsletter last week, I've been doing some evaluation of the department and decided to kind of shuffle things around a little bit and change up some of the roles. Gives us a lot more flexibility in some of our staffing assignments, as well as with some of the changes in the supervisory structure. Kind of reduces some of the span of control, get balances things out a little bit, especially in the engineering division, where our supervisory structure was a little unbalanced. So balancing that out a little bit. At a future meeting, you know, we will be bringing a new face to you to introduce as one of the new supervisors in engineering. But at this time, I did want to kind of reintroduce the two familiar faces to you. So first one, Justin Girock. His new role is the engineering division manager slash city engineer. Justin?[238.01][238.01](LAUGHING). So in this role, Justin will be taking over responsibility for all of the engineering division and managing that division's daily operations. Previously, Justin was one of our engineering supervisors, so a step up for Justin and taking over that whole division. Also, Steve Godie, with Justin's role as engineering division manager slash city engineer, Steve Godie's role as assistant director slash city engineer is changing as well. Steve's role is maintaining the assistant director, but also taking over as a utilities general manager, providing some additional support to the utilities division. Someplace I've been trying to spend a little more time, haven't been able to. So I think this structure will help me and help the utilities division get a lot more support that they've needed to deal with, some things that they've been working on over there. So so far, we're about a month into the change, working through a few things. We've got some positions that we're still working on filling. But as you are starting to see memos with perhaps some new names and new titles, we wanted to at least introduce you so you knew what the changes were and where they're coming from. So I look forward to both Steve and Justin in their new roles, and so far, things are going well for us.
Great, thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is a presentation, the annual presentation from GOHNI. Mr. Davis, would you like to introduce Ms. Ruder?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. GOHNI or Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated has been working with the city for the last several years on helping create, maintain neighborhood associations, as well as work on projects, events, and some real estate redevelopment. And Ms. Ruder's been on the job not quite a year in this particular capacity, but she does have some insights. She has been very good at predicting Virginia winning the March Madness project. Further ado, Pamela Ruder.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And thank you to the council for allowing me to come in, give you a little bit of a synopsis as far as what Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated has been up to. We'll focus primarily on 2018. You were given the 2018 annual report for Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. And then Deputy Mayor Pal Mary also asked for some additional information with our volunteer tracking data. So you have a couple references. I'll go with a little bit different PowerPoint as we go through and talk a little bit about Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. That's probably one of our emphasis is getting away from using the acronym when we talk about our organization and really talking about healthy neighborhoods, because that's what we're here to do, is really develop and create more healthy neighborhoods in Oshkosh. So that's part of our change. I do have some board members here tonight as well. Mr. Bill Wyman is here. Alan Davis is on our board, as is Mayor Steve Cummings on our board. We, I have gained a lot of clarity in the last 11 months on the job. I'm thrilled, number one, to work with this board of directors. They have come in with a really encouraging framework. Number one, we had 100% board giving last year in 2018, which had not happened in the past. So they recognize stepping up as board members is important to us moving forward, but we've also really gone out and really forged new partnerships in our community. And I'll get to a couple of those as we talk about it. But really, really excited for 2019 as I get into a year on the job and really, again, have a little bit better framework to present and bring to you all. All right. With our, with our healthy neighborhoods, we're up to 16 recognized neighborhood associations in Oshkosh. And we have been going out and really trying to engage those residents, sustaining the ones that we have, growing into new ones is a high priority. But for us, it's really going back and making sure that our neighborhood associations that are already developed are utilizing the resources that this city and this council has supplied to them. We are here to help them grow stronger from the grassroots level up. It is neighbors helping neighbors, neighbors knowing neighbors is really that first step. And we spent a lot of time and will continue to try and develop new neighborhood associations. One of the things that this group does, though, is they meet regularly as an alliance. The third Tuesday of every month, leaders from all the recognized neighborhood associations come together. We have a forum for exchanging ideas and information, but we also bring in guest speakers so that they are aware of what's going on in their neighborhoods and in their city. Some of the success measures that we work with the city on with our contract, we are very thankful that we have that in place because we leverage the city contract, those public dollars, and grow it with private dollars as well. We added the Sawyer Payne as a recognized neighborhood association in 2018. The volunteer hours invested, and that was the nine-page document you received, 6,577 volunteer hours is almost double of what we had in 2017. We have more citizens engaged in their neighborhood. That's exactly what we want to have happen. Still room for growth. We, at 16 recognized neighborhood associations, definitely have room even for another 16. So we are working on that. As we work with the neighborhood associations, we spend some money and help them with their branding. The street top signs show their logo. And Sacred Heart and Lumber River received new logos last year. And then we updated River East because one of their projects was to put their logo on one of the bus stops in their neighborhood. And so they needed a little higher definition in order to do that. Total neighborhood investment with those branding dollars as well, 100, over $189,000. So we have people looking to strengthen our Oshkosh neighborhoods. A partnership that we're really excited about coming up in April is the Rock the Block Neighborhood Revitalization in our Sacred Heart Neighborhood Association. We partnered with Habitat for Humanity and the City of Oshkosh. And I could go on and on, but I only have a short time here tonight. That project has come together with truly a unique situation. It is not the Rock the Block from the Fox Cities. It is a Oshkosh Rock the Block. We have 22 projects that the neighborhood has come together and submitted applications. We are working as a collaboration. You all know that doesn't happen without some efforts of give and take, but it really has come together, and we're very excited to showcase that in April. With the additional success measures, 131 community building events with our neighborhood associations, again, that more than doubled over the prior year. But it truly is those neighborhoods taking charge and trying to plan what their future of their neighborhood's going to look like as well. Menominee South had a great renovation of the Seasand and Sailor Land. That's with the Great Neighborhoods grant, as well as the neighborhood association coming together and working with the One Oshkosh and the City of Oshkosh in order to make that project a success. We're looking forward to Stag Boward Park being done in Sacred Heart Neighborhood during the Rock the Block. Our staff gets out there, but it is just a two-person staff. So again, I rely heavily on our board of directors, but other volunteers have also stepped up to help us get out in the community. We were at each of the summer, or each monthly summer farmer's market last summer, and will plan to be there again this summer. And then it's really showing support of the uniqueness and the diversity of the events that our neighborhoods plan, whether it's a book club, or in this picture, a birdhouse building event that brought together all ages. It's a great job. So I'm very happy to be in this position, but we also want to make sure that we are moving forward. We had four neighborhoods engaged in the Neighborhood Partners Education Series. They're learning how to become better leaders, but we really focus on relationship building. How do you get that, that person that just is going to stay in their house, how do you get them to attend one of those events? And they're making good strides, and we are helping with that development. The real estate development and asset management is our other two business lines. We did in 2018 sell the 561 Bowen Street. The assessed value in 2016 of 561 Bowen Street was $85,400. We sold it in 2018 for $119,900. That tax, or that improvement in that land of $34,500 alone is going to increase the tax revenue for the city, which is a good thing. But we see and we want those projects to create a ripple effect. And we are looking for continued operations and opportunities for real estate development in 2019. We'll get to that momentarily. The economic impact, they talked about the budget sources, public versus private funding. Using the volunteer hours gets us to where we want to be, but personally, I want that to be more of a dollar figure. And we're getting there. We've leveraged some of those resources with community foundations and other grants that are out there, but we have work to do, and that's what we are focusing on. The other thing that we want to change is that budget use. We are heavy with the neighborhood revitalization. We want to get into that real estate development a little bit more broadly as far as where our dollars, excuse me, are going. And that is where we're going to next, 2019. You've already approved Fox Chase as a recognized neighborhood association at your last council meeting. We are out in the community doing a rotary presentation, coannus presentation. This morning, I met with First Weber Group with their Realtor staff and did an educational piece. Really getting them on board with the city loan programs that are out there is a huge priority, as well as our neighborhood association. So a lot of educating there. Also met with exit realty and viserility and have more scheduled. Already mentioned the farmer's market. Rock the Block, April 25th through the 27th. 22 Home Project. We've got some corporate partnerships that are coming to fruition as far as the volunteers that are coming out. And the T-shirts arrived today, so it's going to happen. Rock the Block Oshkosh, going to be a nice event. They just had the opportunity of getting a couple consent forms signed by the neighbors, and they were thrilled. They just said, "This is, this is something I've wanted to do for so long. I didn't have the resources," or "I didn't know who to really call or invite in to do it." There was, it has changed as far as the attitude in that neighborhood. Really going to be excited to be out in full force those three days, 25th, 26th, 27th. Hopefully, that snow is not coming, that they're predicting that could put a little bit of a hinge on some of those projects, but we'll do what we can. July 16th is a new event, Neighborhood Night at the Leech, in conjunction with the Tuesday Night Concert Series. We're going to have all of our neighborhoods represented and have information as far as growing and developing new neighborhood associations. As usual, the first Tuesday in August will be with National Neighborhood Night Out and inviting you all to the block parties that will be happening that evening, coordinating that with the Oshkosh Police Department as well. And then a new event that we're hoping to promote is September 28th, National Good Neighbor Day. We'll be creative with our alliance group and see what we can come up with for that particular project. On 555, May 5th at 5 o'clock, the Webster Stanley area is organizing and will hopefully have a recognized neighborhood association to bring forward to you for approval. And the Real Estate Development Committee, we made an offer last month. We didn't get the accepted offer. We got outbid, and we know we need a project. We are working extremely diligently on finding that project. I had so hoped to have one by today, trust me. But we are out there and looking for that next real estate development project or projects. And lots of really good things coming up in 2019. Any questions?
I see no one wishing to ask you questions. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. Just a couple comments in regards to double the growth in volunteers. That's a really tough thing to accomplish. So the fact that you have those numbers and also to have 22 projects also, I think that's a testimony to probably the leadership that's in place. So certainly headed, I think, in a great direction and look forward to hearing more and would certainly like an opportunity at some point to meet with you.
Perfect, thank you.
I see no one else wishing to speak to Pam. Thank you very much, and I'll see you tomorrow morning.
Very good. Be sure to like us on Facebook. That was another growth area. We now have 3,000 followers. In June, last June, we had 600, so.
Wow. Awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Pam. Next, our public hearings. We have two this evening, one of which we will not vote on. Each week, each requires a reading of three times, so bear with me. The first is Resolution 19-203. Approve final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, storm sewer mains and laterals, new and relay, relating to contract number 19-07. A. Sheridan Avenue, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. B. Mitchell Street, West Murdoch Avenue to north of West Lindwood Avenue. C. Crane Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. And Plymouth Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. Second reading. Resolution 19-203. Approve final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, storm sewer mains and laterals, new and relay, relating to contract number 19-07. A. Sheridan Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. B. Mitchell Street, West Murdoch Avenue to north of West Lindwood Avenue. C. Crane Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. And D. Plymouth Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. Third and final reading. Resolution 19-203. Approve final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, storm sewer mains and laterals, new and relay, relating to contract number 19-07. A. Sheridan Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. B. Mitchell Street, West Murdoch Avenue to north of West Lindwood Avenue. C. Crane Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. Plymouth Street, West Murdoch Avenue to Roosevelt Avenue. Pam, did anyone register to speak to this?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Would you please take a roll? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Because I live on Mitchell Street, I will be voting present for this vote.
See, no one else wishing to speak, but now would you please take a roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Present.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie 61, present.
Next is a public hearing for ordinance 19-204. Approve official mapping for 30-foot wide river walk along the north shore of the Fox River at 100 High Avenue. This is Axol Tech International. The Plan Commission recommends approval. Second reading, ordinance 19-204. Approve official mapping for 30-foot wide river walk along the north shore of the Fox River at 10005 High Avenue. Axol Tech International. Plan Commission recommends approval. Third and final reading, ordinance 19-204. Approve official mapping for 30 feet wide river walk along the north shore of the Fox River at 1005 High Avenue. Axol Tech International. Plan Commission recommends approval. There will be no vote, but Pam, did anyone register to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Move on to citizen statements to council, and Pam, did anyone?
Yes, we have a couple individuals. The first one is Lindsay Erickson, 240 Algoma Boulevard, apartment 310.
Okay, citizen to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Most of that items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Please proceed.
Thank you.
So I'm here, sure.
Ms. Erickson, are you here to speak on the vaping?
Yes.
Okay. If we could hold off and we could have your comments under number 27?
Yeah.
Okay, I will call you up then.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Our next individual is Roy Carpenter, 702 West 9th Avenue.
I am Roy Carpenter, and I'm complaining about the bill I got for not shoveling my sidewalks. I blow them every time it snows. And I also clean the corner, plus the down ramp for the, for the wheelchair system. And then they turn around and send Faust over there to clean my whole, my corner out, and all they're doing is cleaning the streets off of 9th Street, which the city always picked up. And now this winter, they came maybe one time down 9th Street to pick that snow up, and that was it.
Mr. Roth?
We can certainly, Pam, talk to Public Works. I don't know if he's spoken with Public Works. This is the first I've heard of this issue.
It is, because I had not said it to nobody. I really never complained. I didn't really know where to go. I don't usually come to these council meetings. This is my very first time.
Okay. Mr. James Robbie is our Public Works Director. James, if you could raise your hand so Mr. Carpenter can see you. So if you, that's normally where you take them, and appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Pam, did anyone else register to speak?
No.
We'll move on to consent agenda items, and these are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Did anyone register, Pam?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Pal Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question on Resolution 19-216 for either Chief Smith or perhaps Trina, because it's kind of a financial question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Just really wanted to ask this question, and again, it might be for Trina, but is there any expectation that for these larger events where police departments looking at providing these special details, if we would be requesting a partial deposit or down payment prior to providing those services?
You actually, in the special event ordinance, as it relates to special events, you have, the council has the ability to request a deposit of, whether it be a full deposit of the estimate, or whether it be a partial deposit of the estimate. As it relates to these types of events, we generally, this is actually providing what we generally already cover for shareholder meetings, for special details that come about, or for other things that may occur at the arena that we currently provide security for that don't actually fall within the special event ordinance.
Right, but if I understood, there was going to be like a different formalization of that because these were outside the city limits, or perhaps I'm mistaken. I thought this-
No, these are all, these are all items that we would cover here within the city limits for the, for the city of Oshkosh.
Okay.
Actually, the Rock USA, Country USA is outside the city limits, and that would be covered under here. There hadn't been any discussion about requiring a deposit. This is just really formalizing what we've been already doing. We haven't in the past required that down payment or deposit. I don't know. We can certainly discuss it. It hadn't come up as we were drafting the agreement, just because it was more a case of, we're just- just because it was more a case of, we're just trying to formalize what we were already doing, so.
But it was my understanding these agreements would like replace it, because they didn't fall into our special events within the city.
Correct. All right.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question for Senate Manager Roloff, a number of these items, when we, we met to go through the agenda the other day, are coming in under budget?
Yeah.
You can elaborate.
Thank you, there are several items, mostly the equipment items that are on the agenda tonight. And in all cases, sometimes we're only a few hundred dollars, but sometimes several thousand, but the, the aerial truck for forestry, the truck for the street division, both of those are significantly under budget. So those are things that, as Ms. Larson goes to do borrowing this summer, we'll reduce our borrowing correspondingly to, to cover those. The fact that we don't, we don't need to borrow for those, so. The mayor and I talked about it, and we thought it'd be a good idea just to, to mention those, and that's, our purchasing division works very closely with our departments to make sure that happens.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Muggerower.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Public Works Director Robbie, I apologize, I didn't give you a heads up, I didn't ask about this ahead of time, and it may be actually something for our new Engineering Division Manager, but 19-212, the award for sidewalk reconstruction, the concrete sidewalk, it was a sole bid, there was only one bid for that. Maybe explain to us, I think we, we got a pretty good idea why, but maybe explain to us and people at home why there's only one bid coming in for that? The implications of that, and, and how we feel about that price compared to getting only one bid?
Yeah, certainly anytime, you know, we only receive one bid on a project, you know, we, we want to try to look into it a little bit. I, I did ask Mr. Garrick to contact one of the other plan holders and kind of get some reasoning, and I think some of it, they just couldn't quite handle all the aspects of it, so, you know, while they took plans out, obviously could have tried to find out what the, the scope and everything was, there are a couple, a couple of things, you know, that they just, they weren't comfortable submitting a bid for that project. It, it is unfortunate, sometimes it does happen, there were, you know, some of the bid item, bid, unit price, bid costs, they go up over last year. But as we reviewed those during our bid review analysis, we did not find it, you know, unreasonable that they went up. You know, we've certainly been seeing concrete costs increase across the board. So some of those unit price increases that we did see, we did not feel they were unreasonable. But certainly anytime there is only a sole bid, we do spend more time analyzing it, and that is one of the reasons this didn't come to you at the last meeting, because this bid opening was actually three weeks ago. So normally, we would have tried to bring it to the last meeting, but because of some of that additional analysis we were doing, we felt that it needed to wait so we could complete that analysis.
Appreciate the, the info, thank you very much.
Councilmember Herman.
Mr. Robbie, this is what, the third year that L. Dix is applied for doing our sidewalk repair programs, I believe?
Third or fourth?
So they're, they pretty much know the scope of the project, and they know that roughly how many areas of the city we're going to have done, and that we're going to have driveway aprons and ADA compliant sidewalk aprons and things like that done, so.
Yeah, they, they know the areas, but exactly which squares get replaced, obviously.
Yeah, they won't know that. I guess where I'm coming is, is that a company that's been doing it for quite some time in the city, pretty much, I mean, we want to look at different vendors, don't get me wrong, to Mr. Muggerower's point, I think that's important. But I think sometimes, once a company bids and maybe they don't get it, they kind of feel like, we can't compete because this company either is willing to work out under, for a different price, or, because they've gotten a bid.
Yeah, certainly, certainly that does happen on projects sometimes, you know, if, if contractors see that they're regularly being, you know, high bid to a certain bidder, sometimes they, you know, they'll put their effort in preparing bids where they have the best chance of feeling they're successful. You know, that's one thing is, you know, we, we have seen some increases in, in price, you know, some of that is due to, you know, just across-the-board increases. We've seen, you know, some, some of them, if they felt they were just being out, you know, they were being outbid, so to speak, and, you know, obviously, you know, if they're, if somebody starts getting a little too complacent, and they start putting numbers a little too high, you know, those competitors are going to be right back, and they're going to steal away from them.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other councilmember wishing to ask any questions, so would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to pending ordinances, which we have three. The first is ordinance 19-221. Approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district, which is SMU, to suburban mixed-use district with planned development overlay, which is SMU-PD at 2625 South Washburn. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Next is ordinance 19-222. Approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district, SMU, to suburban mixed-use district with planned development overlay, which is SMU-PD at 28 Whitsel Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Next we have new ordinances, two of which we will not take a vote on, the first is, oh, no, no, parking. Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance 19-223, approve parking restriction on East Wauka Avenue. Traffic and parking advisory board recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Herman.
Thank you Mayor, I just want to point this out, what it is, is a, we, the, the street department has a, well, Mr. Robbie can explain it better, but the Parking Utility Board approved this.
Yeah, it's actually a wastewater pump station right there on East Wauka Avenue. At peak times of the fishing season, this part of the street gets parked full, and my maintenance staff cannot access the pump station in order to perform maintenance activities on that pump station. This is a fairly critical piece of infrastructure, in that if we can't get to the maintenance, the sewer can back up, you know, up into the collection system. So, staff brought it to, to my attention, and we've been working with Transportation Director Collins to, to try to work this through so that we can get no parking in that area right in front of the pump station, so my maintenance staff can get to it to perform maintenance when they need to.
Thank you, Mr. Robbie.
You're welcome.
Okay, but now would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
We have three, new ordinances, two of which we will not take a vote on this evening. The first is ordinance 19-224. Approve zone change from suburban, suburban mixed-use district, SMU, to multifamily residential 12, MR 12, at the 1400 block of Osborne Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Even though we will not be voting, did anyone register to speak to this?
Yes. Joe Furlow, 1230 Devonshire Drive.
All right, thank you.
Nobody else.
Okay. Uh, next is ordinance 19-225. Establish regulations for the use of electronic smoking devices. Now you can come up and speak.
Thank you, my name is Lindsay Erickson, I'm a community health strategist at the Winnebago County Health Department. Our address is 112 Otter Avenue in Oshkosh. So in my role, I coordinate, rethink the Lake Shore Tobacco Prevention Network, which covers Winnebago County. And I'm here to speak about the ordinance on e-cigarettes, proposed ordinance. So, we thank you for wanting to protect the public health and safety of our youth and community. We don't yet know the long-term effects of e-cigarettes, we are finding out some of the short-term effects, health effects that are coming with it. And we know that there is some risk of secondhand smoke and negative health effects, both on the person using the device and people around them. Also, thank you for taking this as an urgent action, and taking action. In spring 2018, we found that 30% of Winnebago County high school students reported using e-cigarettes in the last 30 days. That's about twice the rate of state and national average. And one of the products that we're most concerned about is Juul, which I have an example of. So this is a Juul, doesn't really look like your regular cigarette, kind of looks like a flash drive. That product has really become very popular among younger people, mostly because of the flavors, different flavors that are very tempting for youth. Other product that we're concerned about is called Sorin, this is kind of a newer product, again, does not look like a regular cigarette. Again, has a lot of flavors. And while we're concerned about the youth who are actually using these products, we're really concerned about the bigger picture and access to these products in the community as a whole. We don't expect this trend to change unless we actually address access. So we know that some populations of youth and adults are disproportionately burdened by tobacco marketing and nicotine addiction. This includes individuals of low income, people of color, LGBTQ youth, and people who have experienced trauma or other mental health issues. The type of policy is a step in the right direction, but there's potential, excuse me, potential for unintended consequences for further punishing and stigmatizing addiction, not necessarily reducing youth smoking rates. We don't know that, we do know that comprehensive policies are more effective, like smoke-free air ordinances that include e-cigarettes. And that does reduce youth access. Many municipalities around the state, including just recently Appleton, are choosing to strengthen their clean indoor air policies by including e-cigarettes and vaping. These policies strengthen clean indoor air and create community norms to make sure that everyone has access to clean air. So thank you for wanting to take action on this issue, it is a, a big issue that we're dealing with. And we want to make sure that everyone is protected for clean air. Thank you.
Thank you, any councilmembers have any questions? I do have one, I had a discussion with a parent, and they were very concerned with their, their child, who's a high school student, the vocal cords from this, is that?
Yeah, so I mean, there are reports every week of different health effects that are coming, because these products contain so much nicotine. There's some risk of lung irritation, lung disease, heart effects, other issues, so we're finding more and more every day about these products.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Peck.
Excuse me, I would move to waive the rules and to consider this on first reading.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I believe we'll take the vote.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
A little vote ordinance?
I would move for approval of ordinance 19-225.
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Herman.
Thank you Mayor, Chief Smith? You brought this ordinance forward, you want to just talk a little bit about the importance of it, and why you feel that the city of Oshkosh needs to have this ordinance?
Well certainly, myself and City Attorney Lawrence, and we'll, we'll tag team on this. For, for us in law enforcement, primarily on school property and with our juveniles, we, we currently don't have an enforcement tool. And the e-cigarettes are comparable or even more harmful than a regular cigarette, and we already, we already regulate the use of cigarettes for juveniles within the school system and for juveniles across the city. This gives us an additional tool that we can use, that we're, we're actually want compliance. We're not going to go out there and, and find the kids that are using e-cigarettes and start writing them tickets out of the gate. We want to, we want to educate our kids, but we also need an enforcement tool in order for us to, to help keep people safe here.
Okay. Attorney Lawrence, and where are some of the requirements and the, what are some of the things that are in the ordinance, I guess would be the best way?
Basically, the ordinance regulates the purchase or possession of e-cigarette-type products by minors and the sale of those products to minors. It would also prohibit anyone from using them within city-owned buildings, City Hall, any of our, our city buildings, the transit center, and also on school grounds. And then the, the penalties would mirror the tobacco penalties in the current ordinance.
Now, this ordinance just is, is solely focusing towards the, the minor, correct? So, and, so citizens could still go into a, a place that a public restaurant, and they could, they could, an adult could use an e-cigarette in a, in a public place?
It's focused on minors for purchase, possession, and sale. For city buildings and facilities, and for school grounds, it would cover anyone. But those are the only places it would cover everyone, so it's not directed at restaurants, taverns, those kind of things.
Now, a student that, we, we have a park ordinance about cigarettes in the parks and, and around some of our facilities. Is that going to incorporate the e-cigarette too then?
Well, with the, with the, are you speaking of a juvenile?
Yeah.
Yeah, it certainly would cover the juvenile. Within the city with this ordinance, no juvenile under the age of 18 will be able to, to possess or use an e-cigarette in any facility, any building, any, any public space.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Crowsey?
I had a few questions, but you just answered the one, so it's citywide, it's not just public, city-owned buildings and schools, so it's citywide?
Yes.
Is it just?
For minors.
For minors, yeah. Is it just nicotine-containing e-cigarettes, because some of them don't include nicotine, so it's complete? No sale of any vaping product?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and then with the fines, is there also, you take the item away from the person when you find it?
Yeah, that would be evidentiary, yes, we, we would keep that.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you Mayor, I guess I just have a question then. So in our ordinance, we say that the fine is not less than $25, and not more than 500, so perhaps you could just kind of help us understand, like, why is such a range?
When you have a range like that, typically, they, the officer will write it for the lower amount. It gives the court the ability to raise that in appropriate circumstances.
Thank you.
I see no other councilmember wishing to speak to this, so would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Next, we have ordinance 19-226. Create temporary no-wake zone in the Fox River North upstream of Wisconsin Street Bridge for water ski show, Center for Youth Evangelism, Chosen International Pathfinder Camp Ree, Thursday, August 15, 2019, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Staff recommends waiving second reading. We have to do a motion in a second.
Oh, we need, all right, I would move to waive the rules to approve on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Could you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Councilmember Herman?
I move that Resolution 19, or, excuse me, ordinance 19-226. Create temporary no-wake zone in the Fox River North upstream of the Wisconsin Street Bridge for water ski show, Center for Youth Evangelism, Chosen International Pathfinders Camp Ree, Thursday, August 15, 2019, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second. Any discussion? Councilmember Herman?
Thank you Mayor, this came in front of the Parks Board, I'm sure most of you are aware of the Pathfinders, they're going to be holding their jamboree out at EAA this year. They're looking to have something to entertain the, the students, and I think Ms. Snell can answer any questions or even go in a little more detail. But the Parks Board did approve this, temporary no-wake zone, so if you want to just reiterate a little more on it, appreciate it.
Sure, each year the Pathfinders, when they come through, they host an event that they'd like to, to have free to the community. In the past, it's been parades and different, different things, they had a speaker at the Leech one year. So if you get any phone calls of somebody wanting to put their boat in, and they're upset that the landing was closed, it's just closed during that, that timeframe, because they'll be working off of that landing.
Deputy Mayor Palmieri.
Just a, I guess, a clarification question then. So other than us announcing it, what kind of, like, visual symbols would somebody have for that, other than, you know, buoys? Is there any other, I guess, signage, if you will?
Yeah, the Waterboard, I can answer that probably. The Waterboard group has their own kind of people that kind of monitor the area, and any passing boats, they would put them off to a side. And I believe they're also talking to the Sheriff's Office to possibly have their patrol boat out in the area also.
Potentially. They are also working with the Coast Guard Auxiliary to be able to help out with that. So they are purchasing buoys that they can place on each end of that, too, for a warning. We've also talked to them about communicating to the different marinas and things ahead of time to just kind of try and get that word out.
So there's actually somebody out there kind of directing boats.
Yeah, because, you know, a lot of these public water ski shows are in public waterways, and so you have to keep navigation open by law. And so they will have people there to make sure that any boats coming to or from that area will be put on one side of the river, the other probably the north side of the river.
Thank you. Sounds exciting. I think so.
Would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Mublerower.
Aye.
Crozey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have three new resolutions. The first is Resolution 19-227, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Oshkosh, Woodegon County, Wisconsin, requesting that the Wisconsin State Legislature reaffirm its commitment to reimburse local governments in their entirety for personal property exemptions for machinery. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Roloff, would you, I think we all know what this is about, maybe the public doesn't. Would you please elaborate on this?
Sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to, and Ms. Larson can also provide additional detail. This goes back to a meeting we had with our legislators recently, and during a discussion with the legislators about this personal property exemption, they were under the mistaken assumption that cities were being made whole on this exemption, and the reality is, is that there was a ruling by the Attorney General in which the definition of machinery was broadened to apply to more than just what this legislature had intended. And as a result of that, other businesses are rightfully taking, requesting these exemptions, and by law, we're required to do it. But the impact was that the legislature was supposed to make us whole. We've already lost an additional $7.8 million in value over and above what the state has made us whole on, and that in itself equates to about $82,000 annually. So that's, that's now and forever, every single year, we'll see a reduction. Mr. Davis and the assessment staff took a look at it, and we're looking at tens of millions of dollars in potential lost value as a result of this. So I don't think the legislature really recognized the impact of this. So the resolution is drafted, and I appreciate the council saying they would like to get this out there, is asking the legislature to seek input from local governments. We're giving our impact, but what is the true impact on this machinery exemption and then amend the formula reimbursement? I took the liberty of adding, putting it in there for exemptions through the 2021 tax year, because I believe it'll take a few years for businesses to become aware of this exemption, and as they, as they take advantage of it, it would be appropriate for us to be made whole, because that was the legislative intent that was clearly represented to, for those of you who were there, the legislators were like, well, no, you guys got made whole on that, right? And Trina spoke up and said, well, and I think it was an eye-opener for, for the legislators. Did I miss anything, Trina?
No, I think that's a very good summary. The item that I would add is, the one vendor which you approved a refund for a couple of weeks ago, in their correspondence with the city, they had already approached 22 of 35 municipalities, of which they hold businesses, and requested this refund. As we talked about it, it is a movement that will broaden, just because the businesses are becoming aware and they're talking with each other, and the more they talk, the more they're going to seek these refunds, and these refunds are a budgetary item in our annual operations budget.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, a couple of things I just want to point out. First off, council members, last council meeting, Councilmember Allison Osby and I withdrew the measure because it was under further discussion, and her and I wanted a resolution brought forward, so that's why the resolution was brought forward. Just maybe in the last paragraph, you're talking about Resolution representing the city of Oshkosh, legislators, other individuals. I think because the law ruling was under the old administration in Madison, which was the former Attorney General, that we want to make sure this gets in the hands of the new Attorney General, to see if they would relook at that ruling. And also, I think it needs to go to both the head of the Assembly and the head of the State Senate, along with the committee that brought this forward in the very first place, which I'm not sure which one, if it was the budget, State Budget Committee. Mr. Roloff, you might know, or the League of Municipalities might be able to help us with that, but I think it needs to get in the hands. I don't think we need to make a copy to send to every legislator, but I do think it needs to get in the hands of those that chair of certain, these certain committees that bring these types of bills forward. And the mayor has said it time and time again, this is another way of Madison taking home rule away from communities, and hopefully, with a resolution like this, and hopefully other communities are stepping up, and, and I think the League of Municipality needs to get a copy of this resolution also, because I noticed it was not on their radar, as far as I know.
I don't believe it was on their radar.
Right. And so I think it's important that we, as the, you know, one of the largest cities in the state, and already being affected by this ruling, that we get it in the hands of as many people that can make a change in the law to help communities out.
Thank you for those suggestions. We'll, we'll make sure that we broaden it, and I think it was intended to be broadly worded so that we pretty much have the green light to get this out there to affected parties. So thank you for those additional suggestions.
Just a couple of comments to add to what Councilmember Herman said. Having once owned a small business, this personal property tax is a bookkeeping nightmare. I don't care what size business you are, it's probably a bigger burden the smaller the business, just to keep track of small things from desks to chairs to, down to pencil sharpeners. So it was a good thing to get rid of it, but what the state promised us is not what they're delivering. And again, Mr. Herman said home rule, but it's a case of Madison promising something, something to the municipalities, and then basically stiffing us. I can't think of a more polite word to say, but this is not the only case where they promise something, and they don't live up to what they said they would do for the community. So I think this is very, very appropriate. Deputy Mayor Palmieri.
Thank you, Mayor. If I recall, too, at that meeting, I believe that there was a figure that was provided. I don't remember if this was a statewide average, but it was referencing how homeowners had, are basically, were having another tax shift of about 2% on top of the average 5% from dark store. So this is an additional, if I recall, statewide average of approximately 2% tax burden. Is that your recollection from that meeting?
I don't recall the exact number, Trina. I'm not sure if you do, but I appreciate you bringing up that point, because if the state does not make us whole, it effectively shifts this tax burden to residential property owners, and I think, we've heard a number of people, the mayor's given his expression for, a lot of small businesses, the honest ones are the ones who, who really get hurt because they report it, and we're creating more and more exemptions where you're literally looking for a needle in a haystack. And, you know, quite honestly, you know, I think we need to eliminate the personal property tax and have the state make us whole. They've done this before in other areas. Personal property tax is a, is a good candidate to get rid of, because it is, it's a nuisance into collection. It's, it's administratively more difficult to, to get that captured than any other form of taxable property, and it only impacts businesses, it doesn't impact residences. So if we get rid of it and the state makes us whole, we're going to be so much better off on so many levels. But Trina, I'm not sure with Deputy Mayor Palmieri's number, I, I...
I could be mistaken. I thought that I, that number was thrown about.
You remember?
I, I know in our meeting when we did approve the refund, we were talking about the impact in the overall tax base, and Allen had, had given a percent. So I believe that is close to what we were referencing in that meeting.
Equivalent to about 50 million, just in Oshkosh. I don't know how that would apply to the rest of the state.
50 million in Oshkosh alone.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank Councilmember Herman for also agreeing that this was something that probably needed to be put as a resolution, because we did bring it up with the legislatures, but I also understand that this is not the only thing that's on their plate moving forward. And sometimes the squeaky wheel, I guess, gets the grease, and so certainly would appreciate council support, but to Ms. Palmieri's point, that was one of the points I was going to make, was, you know, that it does shift, you know, to our residential, and already, you know, they're impacted by a number of things. You know, hopefully, this will get the attention of the League of Municipalities, and as Councilmember Herman had mentioned, getting in the hands of other people. I would also suggest, and maybe, maybe or maybe not, but could possibly our Oshkosh media get out a press release in regards to it, too, because I do believe we're the only community in the state of Wisconsin that I think has actually formalized this in the manner of a resolution, and my hope is maybe perhaps others would adopt it as well that are being impacted, which therefore then gives more voice, hopefully, for municipalities at the state level.
Good points. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the, the $82,000 shortfall, I think Trina, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, that equates to, that's almost about two cents on the levy, because if I remember correctly, when we talk about budget increases, about $40,000 of revenue or expenses works out to be one penny on the levy. So just that $82,000 alone is a tax shift of two cents on the levy to the residential taxpayers. And as far as related to Mr. Herman's comment about getting this to the leaders of the state Assembly and the state Senate, I think in order to get their attention, you might want to attach a check to it as well.
I believe we've all had our say. Was that below the belt? No, I think it's a reality that not only do they take away home rule, they take away our money, and they're forcing it onto the homeowner to make up a shortfall, and it's happening all over the state, so. With that, would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Mublerower.
Aye.
Crozey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution 19-228, approve specific implementation plan for a contractor yard at 2625 South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. If you please take the roll.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmieri.
Aye.
Mublerower.
Aye.
Crozey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have council discussion, direction of the city manager and future agenda items.
Citizen statements.
What?
Second, citizen statements.
That's after this.
Yeah, after.
Yep.
There's nothing on there.
There's nothing on here. So we'll go to the second time for citizen statements. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
All right, now we're on to council member announcements and statements. I am first to go, and this is for Unity and Community. Jake, do you have stuff to show? All right, Unity and Community will be, this is our second annual event. It's on April 13, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Convention Center. We very wisely moved the event indoors this year, because we just didn't think we could have perfect one or two years in a row. It'll be, it's a family-friendly event. It's free. There's an educational component. That's from last year. The food, the food is there. We've got everything from Greek food to food from the Philippines and different foods from the former Soviet Union. There, the food is there to really sample. It's not there to go and have lunch. We will have pizza for the kids in case they don't want some of this, a little more exotic. That's the group in the Soviet Union, former Soviet Union. I have been really blessed with it, just an incredible steering committee on this. We're probably the most inclusive and diverse, diverse group in the city. It's just been a great group to work with, and we've, we have a lot of fun. Some of the entertainment, and I'll go through this fairly quickly, we have the Medicine Bear Singers from Kishina, we have a Philippine dance troupe of the Fox Cities, UW Japanese Takeo Group, North High Dance Group, Oshkosh Rhythm Institute, North High African Dance. It goes on and on for, it's nonstop music for the four hours and nonstop food. Some great educational things, but I really want to thank the steering committee for the, for the two years of devotion for this, this endeavor. It's been, I think, very rewarding. It is showing that we are becoming a very diverse community, and hopefully will lead to more inclusion in all, in all areas of the city. But the group that's been helping us is the Oshkosh West Global Academy, and they've been great. They did, they designed the poster, they've really done all the marketing for us, they've interviewed with radio stations, TV stations, just a bright, bright bunch of young students. So it's been a, just a delightful event for the city. So I hope to see you all there. Again, it's, it's a family-oriented, a lot of educational components for the children, and even the adults might learn a few things about the world when they do this. And just a warning, we've asked all the food vendors to make food as they would in the native countries. Do not Americanize it. That's, but we have pizza for the kids. They may not want some of this stuff. It gets a little spicy, but just a good event, again, at the Convention Center, 11 to 3, and hope to see you all there. And Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor Cummings, and I appreciate all the work that's going into it, and I am so sorry that I am not going to be able to be there this year. My oldest daughter is having her bridal celebration that day in Green Bay, and if I want an invite to the wedding, I should probably be there.
We'll save you some food.
Yeah.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens of Oshkosh for the honor and the privilege of representing them the past eight years. It has been a tremendous eight years, from the revitalization of what was a shell to a thriving hotel downtown, and the downtown development that that created...
TV stations, just a bright, bright bunch of young students. So it's been just a delightful event for the city. So I hope to see you all there. Again, it's a family-oriented, a lot of educational components for the children, and even the adults might learn a few things about the world when they do this. And just a warning, we've asked all the food vendors to make food as they would in the native countries. Do not Americanize it. That's why we have pizza for the kids. They may not want some of this stuff, it gets a little spicy. But just a good event, again, at the Convention Center, 11 to 3, and hope to see you all there. And Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. Cummings, and I appreciate all the work that's going into it. And I am so sorry that I am not going to be able to be there this year. My oldest daughter is having her bridal celebration that day in Green Bay, and if I want an invite to the wedding, I should probably be there.
We'll save you some food.
Yeah.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens of Oshkosh for the honor and the privilege of representing them the past eight years. It has been a tremendous eight years, from the revitalization of what was a shell to a thriving hotel downtown, and the downtown development that that created, our Riverwalk, the significant investments in infrastructure that councils have made. Over the past eight years, we've addressed long-term debt that was handed to council when I was, came on eight years ago, along with Ms. Allison Osby, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Cummings were there. We've put it on a glide path to, actually, we've created, we created a tenure plan, and we got it done in five. We addressed a significant pension debt that previous councils had kicked down the road that in the long term will save the city significance amount, significant amounts of money. We've created a public-private partnership in both GoEDC, GoHNI. Government can't solve everything, we can facilitate solutions, and we can make coalitions and partnerships to create the solutions that our citizens want in our community. We took down a fire hazard on South Main Street, replaced it with the Menominee Nations Arena, and all of the things that are coming with that. All of this was done with a trust and a mutual respect of the members of this council, as well as our trust and respect for the citizens. I hope that moving forward, that councils will maintain that attitude of trust and mutual respect. Ms. Allison Osby, I want to thank all council members I served with, but Ms. Allison Osby, Mr. Herman, Mr. Cummings, we've been here eight years together. As I indicated, many great things have happened in this eight years. It has truly been an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Oshkosh. One of the things that I often say is, words are only, words are not worth the air that's used to breathe, that's used to breathe them and say them, nor the ink that's used to write them. Words only matter when we truly put them into actions. I've always conducted myself by telling people what I would do, and then I went out and did it. So I may be leaving, but I am not going away. Thank you all. It's been an honor and privilege.
Thank you. I will not repeat what Mr. Peck said, I will merely echo the things he said. It's been an incredible, well, Steve and I have been here one year longer, an incredible decade what's happened in this city. It's not the same city that it was 10 years ago. And we've cleaned up a lot of messes that were dropped in our lap. I've got a passion for this city, its past, its present, and certainly its future, which has never, never looked better. So let's see, let's hope we keep moving, the city keeps moving forward. It's been, it's been an incredible decade. So great city staff, great citizens. It's been, it's been a blast, it's been a good time. So with that, I will turn this over to City Manager Roloff for announcements and state, Mr. Muggerauer.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, and I should have added this ahead of time. Budget listening sessions, two of our representatives are going to be right here, I believe in this chamber, on Monday, the 15th, this Monday, from 4:30 to 5:30 for a budget listening session with State Senator Dan Fion and Representative Gordon Hints, both leadership for the public. If they have a chance, they should come out and give their local representative their thoughts as to what's going on in Madison, and what could be going on in Madison, and what they would like to see. And then, and I should have had this under council, direction of the city manager, I just had a question for Mr. Roloff on the, the Long Range Finance Committee's recommendation to council, it was 90 days ago. I know you and your staff have been working on it, and you would ask that maybe, maybe it might be appropriate for you to give us just a brief update, and I apologize, I didn't have it under the last heading, so.
Thank you. We are, staff met after, we had a meeting with the city of Neenah to get an idea of what they were doing. Got some good ideas, but I think there are some unique circumstances in our situation. So City Attorney Lawrence and myself, Finance Director Larson and Public Works Director Robbie met. And now, Mr. Robbie and I have to take a look at some of the special assessment tweaks that we, it's never as simple as you think it's going to be, but I hope within the next month, we'll have a draft for council to review so we can get this implemented. We all know that residents who have gotten notices of special assessments this year are very anxious, and we need to get some closure on it, so we'll be bringing that forward to council shortly. So thank you for asking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You might as well continue, Mark.
Okay, now I'm on a roll. Transition to monthly utility billing is proceeding, this is the month where the transition is actually occurring. So I know this is repetitive, but in case people are hearing it for the first time, everyone's getting a bill this month, but because it's a transition, it'll either be a three, a two, or a one-month bill. If you got a bill last month, that was your last quarterly bill, you'll be getting a one-month bill this year. If it was two months ago, you'll be getting a two-month bill, and if it was three months ago, you'll be getting a three-month bill. Next month in May, everybody will begin receiving the monthly bill on a regular basis. So this is the transition month that we've been shooting for all along. And Finance Director Larson and her staff and our IT staff deserve a lot of credit for keeping this on the front burner so that we can get it done. We believe it'll help make it more affordable, because it'll spread your bills out a smaller amount, even though it'll be monthly, it'll be a smaller amount for people on fixed incomes and things of that nature. We believe it'll be a benefit, and thank goodness for our new resource software that gives us the capability of doing that. So that's that. Implementation of police staffing study recommendations, the council will recall that you gave me a goal for finding funding sources for public safety improvements. There was a study done by Matrix Consulting for the police department. Parenthetically, we're in the middle of one for the fire department right now. The council received a report after the budget was adopted, but prior to the budget being adopted, the council adopted additional funds totaling $117,000. Chief Smith has taken a look at that and has recommended to me a way to implement Phase One of this project. There are multiple phases, but this is the first phase of it, and it's in keeping with our budget. But I felt it was necessary to point out to the council that the subsequent impact for future years, even though it's only $117,000 this year, there'll be an additional impact of 175. But I believe that was the intent of council to soften that blow so that we can absorb it over a period of time. So I've given the chief the green light. This would look to implement it in August, so we want to be able to get started with the recruitment. So I wanted to report that to council.
Before you proceed, Councilmember Muggerauer has a question.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a concern with the implementation of this without our direct approval. If it came through the budget process, we'd be giving our approval for it, we'd be asking, being asked to add members to the organizational chart. And I think for you and Chief Smith to do it without our direct approval is circumventing our approval process that we should have here, or that we do have here. When we met for budget, we did put aside $117,000 for contingency. It was not specific to any one position, and that with the intent that it could be brought back or should be brought back for us to discuss that, be informed, and that we should put a vote to that, to that budget change, because that's what it really is, is a budget change, budget amendment. Second part of that is, it does have a significant impact on next year's expenditure restraint limits that we may have, or that we will have. $175,000 is a big number. This year, I think we added, if memory serves, right about, was it 400, or just underneath? Potentially half of what we added this year could be already gone without us even getting a chance to approve that. So I have problems with that, and the precedent it sets for adding, for City Manager Roloff and department heads to add people to our org chart without us having a chance to have final say on that. I know the chief thinks he needs these, and I know he needs these, I know the study confirms that, and I will be supportive of adding them. But the process is important, and for us to have our say in that process is equally important. Mr. Mayor, I give it back to you.
Mr. Roloff?
Well, I believe, I believe the council did give us some direction through the funding with the $117,000. And part of the reason that the council didn't specify it at the time was that the study wasn't complete, the council had a workshop a few months ago and endorsed the, endorsed the recommendation. So my interpretation was that they did, that the council did in fact do that. If you feel there requires something different, I'm certainly happy to do that in the future, but I felt I was taking specific direction from council based on a specific goal that you gave for me, an annual, annual goal, getting the study done and getting the funding. So if there is a misunderstanding, certainly, we're going to be doing the exact same thing. I don't know if we'll, well, we'll probably have the fire study done prior to the budget, so the order, you'll know the impact. So it'll be done through the normal budget process, but I felt that the council had already approved the 117, and we will implement this and meet our, stay within our budget as a result of that. So I guess that's, I took the recommendations from Chief Smith, and I thought they were very appropriate and measured, and that, that's why I gave him the green light to proceed with the recruitment.
Councilmember Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with part of Mr. Muggerauer that adding staff, specific staff without approval, and it's always kind of been in the budget, but I think the fact that, as you said, it was a goal, we did budget $117,000 by waiting to implement until August of this year to three identified positions, the digital evidence custodian job, you're under the $117,000 threshold. Maybe in the future, it might want to be a little more when the, when the, let's just say the fire department, if their staffing is going to be identified, that we clarify that at that time so that there is no miscommunications. But I'm comfortable with this, because obviously you guys did a lot of work to get to that 113.5 and keep it underneath what was already budgeted, and it's in our budget, so I don't have any problem moving forward with it. I appreciate all the feedback.
Deputy Mayor Palmary?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, we ask during budget times, we ask our department heads and our supervisors to go lean. And I think in this situation where, you know, maybe the process was a little bumpy, but we did give that authority. And I think that this does show that creative way of doing more with less, relatively speaking. So it is, it was necessary, and we did have that workshop. I don't think this is too much of a surprise.
Mr. Roloff?
I appreciate all the feedback, and as we move forward, I'll certainly keep those things in mind. So thank you for everything. Excuse me, a couple more things. We have two professional services agreements, one related to the 2019 CIP. Those are on-demand services that we make of AECOM for environmental review during the course of CIPs. AECOM is local, so we can pick up the phone and they can come down same day to provide this service. The other one has to do with the Sawdust District area. We're doing a lot of environmental review of that, and AECOM does have some experience with those two. There is the Oshkosh Corporation update in there. And just as a matter of working on transition, I'm going to defer this mainly to City Clerk Huberg, but the council a few years ago anticipated a vacancy in the, in the council as a result of a mayoral election. And those same circumstances apply this year, and there was a predetermined process that the council gave staff so we could get the ball rolling on recruiting for the replacement for Deputy Palmary, Deputy Mayor Palmary, when she assumes the mayor position next week, so we can get the ball rolling on recruitment. So Pam can explain the process that was previously approved by council and fill in the blanks on the details of how we're going to do it.
Okay. What I started was, I put a publication in the Northwestern yesterday. Tomorrow, in the Oshkosh Herald, there will be another publication. It's on our website. I've worked with Oshkosh Media to have it put on our local government channel. We'll do social media. The forms are available in my office. We will accept applications for 30 days. The deadline is going to be 10:00 a.m. on May 9. I will, once I have those applications, I will submit them to staff and council. They will appear on your May 14 council agenda. Those applicants will have five minutes to do a presentation, and then at that time, the council will vote on it. If we come to an agreement, I will swear that individual in, and then that individual will be seated.
Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. So you mentioned that you can pick the applications up at your office. Will they be available online through the city website?
Yes, it is on the website.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Palmary?
Just, that's exactly what I was going to ask. Do we happen to know where, or can that link also be shared on the social media site?
Yes. I didn't.
Do we know what page it's, is it on the board page, or the council's page? Anybody know?
I was under the impression it was going to be on the front.
Hot topics.
Yes.
Councilmember Crosey?
They're going to give a five-minute presentation. Are we going to be able to ask them questions as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With that?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Palmary would like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Yes, I would. I move that we go into closed session. The common council may convene into closed session to discuss the purchase of properties and/or investment of public funds within the city's Salsur redevelopment district pursuant to Section 19.851E of the Wisconsin State statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second?
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Was there discussion on the item?
Yeah, I think you need to ask if there was going to be any discussion.
To go into closed session?
No.
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crosey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Q.7.
And I would look for a motion in a second to recess until noon on April 16, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Please take the roll.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crosey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Q.7. We are recessed.
Shall we?